Counselor Anderson.
Yeah.
Bucci, Christensen, Condon, Fallon, Kennon, Lucy, Murphy, Nester, Spatafora, DePietro.
Yeah.
First order of business, please?
Minutes to council meetings for September 7th and 21st.
On Counsel Christensen's motion to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved.
Application for amusement machine licenses, Line Drive Corporation, 89 Commercial Street, six machines.
On Counsel Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, matter is referred to license. Thank you.
Order that the Finance Committee review the budget for the purpose of making recommendations to the mayor relative to restoration of public safety personnel, Counselor Fallon.
Counsel Fallon for the paper.
Thank you, Mr. President. While there are similar items on the docket tonight with respect to requesting transfers out of the stabilization account and others, I'd like the Finance Committee to reconvene, of course, and discuss some of the budget issues that we reviewed previously and look at some other accounts so that we can look at restore the restoration of our police and fire personnel.
Thank you, Counsel Fallon. Any questions of the councilor? Counselor Jim Nester.
No questions, but I would like to address it if I could.
Go ahead.
Thank you. As the head of the Finance Committee, I can't support reopening the budget and relooking at it again. If there are specific items or sources of fundings that are identified and we want to put a resolution through, I'm more than happy to entertain that. But we've looked at this budget, we've run through a number of meetings, it's our responsibility to take the budget, go through it line by line, which we have, which I have spent hours on, and I think that is a fiduciary responsibility of everybody up here to do that. So, we've had public meetings, we've had a number of meetings, we discussed it with department heads, we've brought interested parties in, we had an opportunity for anybody that found a source of funding to move around or to switch around into departmental budgets to do that. We had a handful of them after reviewing the budget and we voted on, we addressed them, we voted on them up or down yesterday. But I can't, I can't support this paper going forward and open up the whole budget for that. Again, if there's something specific, more than happy to address that in Finance. But again, the budget is a complex thing, but it's not a difficult thing. The structure of the budget stays the same, it's just the funding that goes in, and we've been told for months leading up to this budget where the local aid was going to fall, so we knew where things were going. So then we finally received it, we should have had a good understanding of where the funding was going to fall within the budget itself. When I first got onto the committee, excuse me, the council, within a week I received the budget from the controller. I went through it, made sure I understood it, talked to the controller, the controller's available anytime, night or day, weekends, to address any concerns that anybody has on the budget. I've subsequently went through three other budgets, being the Finance Chairman of this one, so I know exactly how the budget works. Again, it's a large document, but it's not a complex document. At this point, I can't see three months into a budget, opening that budget up again unless there are, unless somebody has identified specific sources that they want to pull and move and transfer into departments. So, I cannot support this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Nester.
Mr. President, actually, that's fine, Counsel Nester, because I think what I, I'm happy to resubmit items that we can specifically look at, such as the General Revenue Fund and those types of things, and I'll make sure that if this particular motion isn't supported tonight, then I'll come back to the table and list specific accounts. I know we're coming up to your motion a little bit later on tonight, where you talk about various amounts from various accounts, so there's no specificity behind that yet, I'm sure you'll explain it. But I'm happy to resubmit a new motion looking at specific accounts to be able to review.
Just a point of information, the mayor addressed that, where those fundings are going to be just a few minutes ago, so we'll get more, that's just going to be referred to Finance and we'll have more information next week as well.
Well, the mayor addressed the stabilization account. I'm talking about other items that I'd like to take a look at, but I will submit them formally, it's fine. If this effort isn't going to be supported tonight, I'll make sure that I resubmit the motion with specific accounts and recommend that the Finance Committee take a look at it again. Thank you.
Counsel Fallon, if I could from the chair, so you want to continue with the motion at this time?
That's fine, we can continue with the motion, understanding it's not going to be supported.
All right. I have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Counsel Cornet?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counsel Nester on this, to reopen a budget three months after it was passed, it's unheard of. The thing we should understand as city councilors, to initiate a financial paper, it's going to have to come through the sixth floor. So, if the council has specific recommendations, I'm sure we can set up a resolve up there that the council feels that, whatever it is, you know, that he should consider moving money from here to there. But just to reopen the budget, you know, it was voted out of committee unanimously and it passed on the floor, and I know the council did a lot of work as the chairman, so I can't support this paper. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions of Counsel Fallon? Seeing none, is there a second to this motion? Counsel Christensen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So, through you to the sponsor. So, are you saying that you'd be open to tabling it until you come back with a list of specific recommendations?
No. Oh, that isn't what you said.
She's not, okay. Requesting clarification, because I think to what some of the others members have stated, I'd certainly be willing to take another look if, you know, you have identified a pool or a grant or something that we haven't seen. But with that not being the case, I think you just mentioned, you know, a short while ago, you'll be coming back with a list of recommendations. Would it make sense, is the motion timely for us to, you know, vote on this now without seeing a list of recommendations?
I think it's very clear, I appreciate that, Counselor. I think it's very clear that this motion won't be supported, so I don't have a problem resubmitting, listing specific accounts that we can take a look at with respect to making recommendations and revisiting with the mayor to see if there's a possibility for different amounts to be put in place or transferred out outside of the stabilization account, talking about different accounts. I'll resubmit those, put a different motion in, naming specific accounts that I'd like to see if we can possibly transfer monies out in order that we can restore our police and fire personnel. But thank you, I appreciate you.
Is that another point of clarification?
Are you through you to the sponsor, are you withdrawing the motion for now?
No, that's what I want, I'm trying to get.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get, okay, thank you.
Counsel?
I'll withdraw the motion, thank you.
Okay. Motion is withdrawn. Next order of business?
Order that the rules and orders of the Malden City Council be amended to allow for limited public comment at the end of the meeting, Counselor Fallon.
Counsel Fallon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I think that, like other communities, there are opportunities at the end of formal council sessions for people to add input, even if it's for two minutes. This has been something that's repeatedly been requested, I'm basically sponsoring an effort in order that we can allow for public comment at the end of meetings. Certainly, we need those, that type of feedback more than in the periodic public hearings that we bring to the public on specific matters. So, I'd ask that the council consider offering the public an opportunity to have public comment at the end of our formal meetings.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions of the councilor? Counsel Neil Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. Just for clarification, don't we already have the opportunity to do that? Seems to me that our council rules currently allow for public comment, provided that the commentator is sponsored by a counselor. So I think that, that, the process for public input is currently there, so I'm not sure what this would do, and I guess I would ask the sponsor, why this since we already have the opportunity for public comment?
Well, I've been hearing a lot from the public that they would like to be able to come up when different things, especially when they come up under suspension of the rules, which the public wouldn't ordinarily have prior knowledge of, and they would like to make comment and have a participation in the process, make comment at the end of meetings, in cases like that. I mean, certainly, I'm aware that we can sponsor, I have on the docket that I'm sponsoring an individual from this community to appear before the council, but there are other communities that do allow for public comment at the end of the meetings, they sign in, they register in, and have generally two minutes allotted to be able to provide public ideas and comment at the end of the meetings.
And then just in response to that, I guess I would, I would say that this is something that I would remind the councilors, that sometimes we get people who are looking for an opportunity to address the council and currently have the ability to do that, that to change this, I would think, would be unnecessary. I think what we, a more appropriate way would be for us to just remind the public that if you wanted to speak before the city council, if you had issues that you wish to raise, you simply need to contact the councilors. And if you get the counselor to, to make that sponsoring, then this process of allowing public input is there and is in place, and so for those reasons, I would vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. Little order, please. Counsel Judy Bucci, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually am in agreement with my colleague Neil Anderson on this matter. I clearly feel strongly that, having been a member of the city council for three years, I have been, I was participatory in not reaching out to the public as we should have on some issues. And I think over the three-year period, we have definitely changed our modus of operation to include increased number of ward meetings with the residents, contact with the ward reps directly, we're having public hearings on most, I would imagine now at this point for the most part, every key initiative or change that we're making. So, and again, we still, on our own page, have the ability to sponsor someone. So, again, aside from just making some more comments about the need to have more engagement of our community, which, you know, we're, I think we're doing a good job at, I can't sponsor this particular initiative among obviously others that have been promoted tonight here from Counsel Fallon. Thank you.
Thank you. No more outbursts, please. Have you removed? What was it?
I said you don't want to hear what the people have to say.
One more, sir, and you'll have to leave, okay? We'll have some order. Counsel Gary Christensen, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think you remember back in 2008, I tried to bring this topic up and it almost cost me the council presidency that year, if you remember, but the system, from my point of view, can work. I think the folks that really have it down pat and do a good job with it is the, is the school committee, you know, who has a public comment period prior to the meeting beginning, and it's very limited, there isn't a question and answer session, so I think that's the only part where I might differ with my colleague is, you know, having it at different parts of the meeting, I don't think would be the way to go. I think the way to go, if we were going to do it, is to have it prior to the meeting. We were very close in 2008 in instituting it, and again, if it done, if done correctly, you know, it can be a positive tool. So I'd be at least worth, as I was back in 2008 when I proposed it, of taking another look at whether or not, two years later, you know, it's something that could benefit the body. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Christensen. Any other comments from the councilors? Counsel Craig?
I just have a follow-up question, not being on the school committee, Gary, Counsel Christensen. Would we have to amend the rules considering that we're doing it before a meeting, though?
Yes.
You still have to amend the rules?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. President? You'd have to.
You'd have to amend the rules regardless, you know, because I think right now, as highlighted by the council from what, seven, it's a sponsorship setup right now, so if we were to change it, it would have to be referred to ordinance, you know, and then they'd have to amend the rules.
Okay. So, yeah, thank you, Mr. President.
No, sir, Counsel? Counsel Barbara Murphy?
Yes, I'm just a little bit confused on this with what was just said this last time around. You know, I certainly think that it's something that should be discussed in more detail, not something that I'm ready to vote on tonight, up or down, but I would like to sit down and talk about how potentially a process might work, but don't want to feel that I'm backed into a corner per se tonight, that, you know, I have to make a vote one way or the other. So I guess my question is, from what Counselor Christensen and Counsel Spatafora just said, is this something that we could refer to one of our bodies?
Yes.
For further discussion?
Yes.
So that we could actually, you know, have some, you know, real detailed discussion about it, come to some conclusion, and then come back to the floor on it?
Yep. Just as a point of clarification, that would be the, the recommendation from Counsel Fallon to refer it to ordinance, so that's all you would be voting on at this particular time?
Okay, so that, that's what, sorry, I'm confused, so that, that's what this is, it's a recommendation.
I believe that's correct. Isn't that not correct, Counsel Fallon?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. For clarification, are we all set?
Yes, thank you.
On Counsel Fallon's motion to refer it to ordinance, all those in favor? All those opposed? Think we should have a voice vote, if we could?
I'm rolling, huh?
Yeah, please.
Counselor Anderson, Bucci, Christensen, Condon, Fallon, Kennon, Lucy, Murphy, Nester, Spatafora, DePietro.
Yes. The motion passed, the paper will be referred to Ordinance Committee. You're welcome.
Order that Brian Parrow and members of the Malden Fire Department be invited to, be invited to address the city council on October 5th on matters concerning public safety in the community, Counselor Fallon.
Counsel Fallon for the paper?
Thank you, Mr. President. Exercising my opportunity to sponsor a member of the Malden community to make comments to the Malden City Council, I've asked that the city council agree to invite Brian Parrow from the Malden Fire Department up, who would like to address the city council at the October 5th meeting.
If I could from the chair, Counsel Fallon, what would the parameters be for the, for the motion?
Because there have been a number of, there's a number of, there's a lot of information that's out there that he feels with respect to how the fire department is now operating in light of the cuts, he'd like to address the council directly, so that, that, I mean, the firefighter is in the audience today, in fact, but he would like to, he's asked for the opportunity to address the council members directly on matters of public safety with impact to his job.
I see. Any questions for Counsel Fallon? Comment from Counsel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I think this is just the right and appropriate way to have someone appear before the city council. I think, I certainly will support this. I think if there are people or organizations, as we have had in the past, that are to address the council, this is the way to do it, and I think this is a good paper, and I'm prepared to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. Any other questions or comments from the councilors? Counsel Judy Bucci?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, and I too will support this particular request tonight, because I certainly am anxious to hear from the Malden Fire Department's representative in terms of at least, and specifically related to the accurate information that the community needs to hear. It'll be a great opportunity for our public to weigh in that night, I would advocate strongly that we promote that it is live. My hope is that there will be an opportunity for us to have a dialogue, to clear up any of the inferences that have been made by our own colleagues related to inappropriateness of any kind of actions being taken, or any type of funding that was available that we didn't actually spend some time around, but I am certainly supporting this, but for more reasons than just the fact that it is the appropriate way to, you know, have someone come before us. I think it'll be an opportunity for the citizens of Malden to hear some accurate information and clear up some of the poor information that has been distributed and is still out there, and is still being promoted by our own. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bucci. Seeing no other lights, on Counsel Fallon's motion to have Brian Parrow and members of the Malden Fire Department be invited to address the city council on October 5th, 2010, on matters concerning public safety in the community, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. President Parrow would certainly be invited and be notified to appear in front of us on October 5th. Thank you.
Order that the Efficiency Committee review the established process for repair of fire hydrants to ensure that repairs are made in a timely fashion, Counselor Christensen.
Counsel Christensen for the paper, please.
Mr. President, thank you, and through you to the members. Very simple on paper, what I'd like to do is refer this to the ad hoc Efficiency Committee, and this is a result of some dialogue that's been spearheaded by, you know, Counsel Kennon and the Public Safety Committee. And we have come to learn that since 2008, when this body thought we had a pretty good process in place on maintaining the fire hydrants across the city, it turns out, two years later, that we really don't. And so, one of the questions that was answered by the chief of the Malden Fire Department at the last meeting was, he thinks that regardless of how many hydrants we catch up with right now, we really should look at, in the future, how we maintain them. Currently, a list is generated by the Malden Fire Department, that's written up, it's then sent over here upstairs to the Water Department, the Water Department then puts it on a master list of other things they're working on beyond fire hydrants, and so, you know, I think I feel along with some of the other members that the fire hydrants that are easily repairable should be. They shouldn't go on a list and then across town, then upstairs, and go on another list and then, you know, have to wait. These ones that have so-called stem problems or a crack at the bottom that can be, you know, relatively repaired quickly should be, and so, I think we just want to find out if there's a different way that, you know, that we can go about making sure that the more, the fixable ones are done so in a more timely manner. Because otherwise, if we don't, what will probably happen is, two years from now, again, we'll be meeting up and, you know, we'll be looking at a list of hydrants that we thought in 2010 would be repaired, but through no fault of anybody's, it just, you know, got on a list, became part of a master list, and with the, you know, I think the six people they have in the Water Department, they're just not able to get to them, you know, the way that we think they should. So, you know, it's an attempt to look at that and try and improve the process.
Thank you, Counsel Christensen. Counsel Paul Condon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know tomorrow night, we got that special meeting on the public meeting on the meals tax, which didn't seem to have a lot of support during the budget process, but depending on what we hear tomorrow night, I don't think there's any more of a priority in this city right now than to try to get the mayor to commit those monies to repair those hydrants. And you're probably looking, if the council sees that they want to vote that meals tax, you're probably looking at $250,000 for the remainder of this year and upwards of $500,000 next year. It's bad enough we had to lay some of these guys off, but to expect them to run hoes two or three streets away is craziness. You know, we have to get those hydrants working so that they can hook up and have the water needed to put out these fires. So, to me, that would be my absolute number one priority on this meals tax money, and that's where I hope the meeting goes tomorrow night. We may get our heads handed to us, but I think those funds should be designated for that in particular, and I hope that the mayor would agree with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Condon. Any other questions of Counsel Christensen or comment? Seeing none, I just have one, Counsel, if we could, could we invite to the Efficiency Committee meeting, Jack Russell, the head of engineering?
Yeah.
So he can give us, the committee a handle on, on what it would take to definitely repair the easy ones right away and look into what we might do in the future?
Yeah, I think that would be the intent, not only him, but, you know, obviously someone from the Malden Fire Department, and I'm more interested in the process of, you know, from A to B, and that's the real issue I would try to, you know, take a look at with the other members of that committee and then report back to the full council.
Thank you very much, Counsel. Seeing no other lights on this issue. On Counsel Christensen's motion to refer it to the Efficiency Committee, all those in favor? All those opposed? The matter is referred to the Efficiency Committee? Thank you. Next order of business?
Order that the city council create an ordinance that will require all pit bulls to wear a muzzle when outside, Counsel Kennon.
Counsel Kennon for the paper?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This I'd like to send to ordinance for a study as I walk around town, as I listen to residents of my ward. Generally, the pit bull was bred for fighting, for killing, and oftentimes, the people you see with pit bulls are pit bulls themselves. So, I think for the safety of the residents, for the safety of the children, for the safety of other dogs, it would be a wise thing to do, but certainly want to, want to send it to committee for discussion. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kennon. Any questions of the councilor? Seeing none? On Counsel Kennon's motion to refer it to ordinance, all those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it, matter is referred to ordinance? Thank you. Next order of business?
Order that the mayor be authorized to enter into exploratory discussions with Kevin Douglas relative to the purchase of the land known as High Rock, including an attempt to determine his his asking price and to report back to the city council. Council Kinnon.
Council Kinnon for the paper, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, once again. High Rock is a long-term issue up in the Maplewood area. There has been some talk of development, some activity that has taken place. I've also had some offline discussions with Mr. Douglas myself. He has shown some interest in potentially selling the property. It's eight acres of virgin land in Maplewood, High Rock, as everyone knows. And the east side of the city has essentially no land left, no large parcel of land that would be comparable to, say, the Felsmere area are up there. Let's, I can't, drawing a blank, but, so it's just an exploratory thing, giving the mayor the right to explore what it would potentially cost to purchase the property. If we were to ever do it, it probably hasn't been a better time in the last 30 years, not only in terms of price, but also in terms of the interest rates and in terms of what you could bond at. Cost of a million dollars to bond over 20 years, about $70,000 a year today. Again, it's just exploratory. It just gives the mayor the right to go talk to him and come back and report back to the council. So I'm just asking for the council's vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Kinnon. Any questions of the councilor? Seeing none. On Council Kinnon's motion to adopt? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Paper is adopted. Thank you. Next, order of business.
Order that the city accept the provisions of Section 33B of Chapter 138 of the Mass General Laws, including the amendment contained in Chapter 131 of the Acts of 2010. Council Nester.
Council Nester for the paper?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to put the city in line with the state law that moved back, moved up the time that you can sell alcohol from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00. So if a club had a function going on or a bar, say, wanted to have a brunch or something like that, this would allow the city licensing board to issue a permit to them on a case-by-case basis, you know, and they would review the history and their, and their standing and make a motion either to deny or approve that. So I would like to refer this to ordinance, and we'll have a speaker from the licensing board down to discuss.
Thank you, Council Nester. Any questions of the councilor? Seeing none. On Council Nester's motion to refer it to ordinance? All those in favor? All those opposed? Matters referred to ordinance? Thank you. Next, order of business.
Order that the sum of $1,650,000 be in the same as hereby transferred from the stabilization account to the following school department accounts. Negotiated salary increase $399,590. School community secretary, $755. Technical assistance, $74,983. Texts, new adoption, system-wide, $17,559. Directory of literacy, $995,000. BB teacher kindergarten, $124,334. BB counselor guidance, $100,754. Fairway teacher kindergarten, $147,605. Forestale teacher kindergarten, $75,365. Forestale teacher 1 through 4, $44,991. High school teacher English, $55,070. High school guidance counselor, $161,251. High school librarian, $65,643. High school math teacher, $9,713. Linden teacher kindergarten, $80,619. Linden guidance counselor, $56,391. Teacher K through 4, $14377. Councilor Nester.
On Council Nester's motion for the paper?
Thank you. Like to refer this to finance. I've asked that Superintendent Smith come down to discuss this with us. Again, this is part of the monies, of their holdover account that we've already voted for in the budget, but I'd like him to come down and discuss where his appropriations are going. So I'd like to refer this to finance next week.
Thank you, Councilor. Any questions of the councilor? Seeing none. On Council Nester's motion to refer it to finance? All those in favor? All those opposed? Matters referred to finance?
Order that the sum of $540,000 be in the same as hereby transferred from the following counts. Unemployment compensation, $250,000. Stabilization, $235,000. Revenue reserve, $55,000. To the following counts. Police salaries, $380,000. Fire salaries, $160,000. Councilor Nester.
On Council Nester for the paper?
Thank you. The mayor came down prior to the council meeting, to the finance committee meeting, and discussed this, and he will, he will be back next week to discuss it in more detail. So I'd like to refer this to finance.
Very good. Any questions of Councilor Nester? On Council Nester's motion to refer to finance? All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Matters referred to finance?
Resolve that is the sense the city council that the traffic commission install a right-turn-only sign at the corner of Dexter and Elm Streets. Councilor Spatafora and DePietro.
Council Spatafora for the paper?
Thank you, Mr. President. We recently, as early as last year, changed the traffic pattern in the BB school system to accommodate the needs of both the safety of schoolchildren as well as access of apparatus in the event of emergency and then some requests by the neighborhood for high-speed travel. The pattern has worked out pretty well. Councilor DePietro's is Ward, and now we just have a couple loose ends to tie up where if you are stuck between these two doors and you come out of your driveway and somebody inadvertently comes out, they don't realize it's a one-way, and there's been some near accidents taking a right. So we're just asking the traffic department to just put some signage up there to just remind the people who may not be familiar with the streets that there is no right turn on Hawthorne to Elm. Since referred, I think we're referring to traffic.
Refer to traffic.
Refer to traffic. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Any questions to the council? Appreciate any support for this as well. The traffic is in the safety of the children. It wouldn't, wouldn't hurt to have a little extra sign up there, so. Thank you. Appreciate any support. On Council Spatafora's motion to, to pass and refer it to traffic? All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Matters referred to traffic? Next, order of business.
hereby ordained that Chapter 12 of the revised ordinances of 1991 as amended be further amended to make various changes to used dimensional and parking regulations. Council Lucy.
Council Lucy for the paper, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Normally, items like this go to ordinance, but this particular item, there's several proposed zoning changes, and there's tentatively a meeting with the ordinance committee and planning board on October 13th, and the seven different items that will take up. So I would request that we refer it to that joint, joint ordinance planning board committee for the 13th.
Thank you, Councilor. Any questions of Council Lucy? Seeing none. On Council Lucy's motion to refer it to planning and ordinance? All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Matters referred to planning and ordinance?
The claim of Deborah Miguel, 3 Ipswich Road, Boxford.
Council Nester?
Please refer to finance.
On Council Nester's motion to refer it to finance? Which claims is a part of? All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Matters referred to finance? Thank you. Next, order of business.
Standing committee on finance, to whom was referred paper number 225, series of 2010, having considered the same, make the following report. Order that the city of Malden approve the Malden retirement board's accepts, acceptance of the increased retirement allowance under Section 101, Chapter 32 of the Mass General Laws. Committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably. Councilor Nester for the committee.
On Council Nester's motion to receive the committee report? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Council Nester for the paper?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a state law that recently changed that increases widows' benefits through the pension slightly from 6,000 to 9,000 for anybody that would have passed away due to an accident or an accidental disability. So this is funded through the retirement board. It's not through, through any budget items here. Currently, there are only 18 people who receive this benefit and potentially approximately 35 more that could. So this is a benefit for, mostly used by the widows of firemen and police, too, and it's a slight increase. Retirement board adopted it. They recommended that, that we adopted, and I would like that to come out favorably.
Thank you, Council Nester. Any questions of Council Nester? Seeing none. On Council Nester's motion to adopt? The clerk will call the roll, please.
Council Anderson, Boochi, Christensen, Condon, Fallon, Kinnon, Lucy, Murphy, Nester, Spatafora, DePietro.
Yes. Paper is adopted. Thank you, Councilor. Next, order of business.
Under suspension of docket rules, resolve that is the sense the city council with the traffic commission review traffic conditions on Sprague Street. In an effort to reduce speeding through reduction of speed limit installation, assigns enforcement efforts in the area or other appropriate actions. Councilor Nester.
On Council Nester's motion to suspend docket rules? All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Council Nester for the paper?
Thank you. Just like to refer this to traffic. This is an ongoing problem we're having in that area. We've, you know, put a little bit more signage up, but there's still some speeding issues in the area, and it's quite a few children in the area, too. So there's a group of neighbors that ask that we bring it to traffic and see if we can increase enforcement or is any, any way to help slow down and enforce traffic laws in that area. So I'd just like to have this referred to traffic, please.
Thank you, Councilor. On Council Nester's motion to pass? All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Paper is passed and referred to traffic. Next, order of business.
The docket is clear.
The docket is clear, I'm informed. Could we put on our lights for personal privilege, and I'll recognize you? Anybody that would have personal privilege? That's it? You? Someone? Council Jim Nester for personal privilege?
Thank you again. Want to remind everybody, the finance committee will meet tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers to discuss the increase in the meals tax. All the tradesmen out there, if you're out of work, come down, put your name on the resident committee. There's still jobs to be had at Malden High. I'm here. Next, actually, this Thursday night, Malden Papa One is having a fundraiser at the Caloon. Please go on the website and take a look, and this is a great organization that helps hundreds of kids, keeps them busy just about every night of the week, or at least six or seven nights of the week from August all the way through November. It's a great program. Please support it. And I just wanted to congratulate Tommy Walsh. They have a great new restaurant down at 139 Pleasant Street. Was there last night. Looks like it's, it's, it's going to do well. So wish him well. It's 139 Pleasant Street, District 7. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Nester. All set, Council? Spatafora? You're all set? Thank you. Council Judy Boochi for personal privilege, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take a moment to thank Krista Pietro of the Senior Center. Tonight, we actually met, had an additional meeting. We've been trying to create a dialogue, exchange information in terms of providing the Senior Center residents and attendees that the, of the ongoing initiatives and activities of the city council. As we know, it's very difficult to get to this chamber, so the Citizens Engagement Committee has made, I think, a good effort in terms of trying to communicate information to them via newsletters and actually having meetings at the site. So tonight, I, we entertained myself, Greg Lucy, Craig Spatafora, Jim Nester. Were able to get down there and have a good dialogue, listen to the residents and the constant concerns, as well as review the work that, that they're sending to us to look at and some of their other wishes. And second comment would be like, sorry, to remind the Linden residents that we're in attendance at last week's residential meeting, that we'll be rescheduling our meeting with the Malden Police Department to go over neighborhood watch or other concerns that they have. Right now, we're looking at a tentative date for October 6th, but I will certainly communicate that out via our email group. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Boochi. I'll start down on my far left. Council Kinnon for personal privilege. Councilor Barbara Murphy for personal privilege.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remind the residents of Ward 5 that we are having our third quarter Ward 5 meeting this Thursday at 6:30 p.m. at the Forestale School Cafeteria. I would also like to remind all the residents that Window Arts Malden is currently ongoing in Malden Square. If you want to walk through the square and view some of the fabulous paintings of our local artists and very talented local artists, you know, it's, it's a great venue to, to see what the community, the arts community is doing. And lastly, I'd like to let everyone know that our third cruise night is taking place this Saturday, actually during the day, although we didn't change the name, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Pleasant Street. We're expecting a great turnout of antique cars, hot rods and muscle cars. We hope you'll all come down, enjoy them, enjoy the local restaurants, and once again, take the opportunity to look at all the arts in our local windows. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Council Neil Anderson for personal.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank the, the Malden residency committee for the fine work that they have been doing and for the fine work that Gil Bane is now doing, now that they have our former colleague counselor working with recruiting for Malden residents working at the high school. You know, we spent a lot of time here as a council pushing and pushing Gil Bane and the, the other subcontractors to get in line with, with our desires to have Malden residents working on that high school project. We pushed, they push back, we push some more. I think we push, certainly in a, in a stronger and harder way than they are, they have been. I think the result is something that we can all be proud of. I think this council can be proud of the fact that, that we held their feet to the fire, and now we're seeing more. Maybe not perfectly, but we're seeing more Malden residents now that are getting work at the high school. I mean, that was something that, that we took a strong stand on, councilors, and I think, I want to thank the residency committee for their hard work and all those been involved. And I think that's been a very good and positive project for us, so that we not only have a good construction project going on there, but we have good Malden employees, good employees of color, women as well as apprentice, all having a fair share of the activity there at the high school. And so I, I want to applaud all those, I want to applaud all of the councilors as well as these other committees for, for working so hard and making that such a success. The second thing I'd just like to acknowledge that the Malden Police Department teamed up with some of us, including the, well, let me just, the Newland Street Tenants Association under the leadership of Beverly McCaffey. They had a cookout down there and, just last week, and it was nice to see the Malden Police Department, some other police patrolmen who were there, who were helping out flipping the burgers and interacting with the people in that area. And it was just a, really a nice community activity of having the police and the residents interact with one another. So hats off to all of those. I was glad to have a small part in that myself, and, and congratulations to all of them. And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Anderson. That's a point well taken as far as the ordinance, residency ordinance, it's upwards over 40%, I believe, the last report that we got. So job well done by Council Nester and yourself and the rest of the councilors, that's right. Council Christensen?
Just, I'm sure I joined the rest of the body. Hats off to the Oak Grove Improvement Association, the Chinese Culture Connection for a really outstanding Harvest Moon Festival on Saturday. The, saw a couple of the members yesterday, and they asked, you know, what was the best thing about the event besides the glorious weather? thing about the event besides the glorious weather was just the fact of bringing people together. You know, you look around that pond, and you had every group represented throughout the city, it seems. So hats off to them. Also want to thank the Fairway School PTO for another back-to-school bowling party, which some of the councilors are there. They say I still spray a pretty mean shoe, so I definitely have a fallback job someday. And we had about 125 kids attend, along with the families, and it was our highest turnout, I think, in many years, so we're very happy to see that. One of the things it indicates to me is, and this is the final part of my personal privilege, Mr. President, is that, you know, a lot of problems, but we just got some very, very good news out of the Fairway School, who exceeded on the MCAS scores almost every grade level throughout the school. And so I know I join along with everyone else here of complimenting, you know, the superintendent down to the principal, Tom DeVito, and the rest of that school community. I was not surprised that the scores had gone up the way they did based upon what I saw at their most recent open house, where you really, you had cars, you know, parking everywhere in the neighborhood to, to have an opportunity to meet with the teachers and, and the rest of the school community. So, you know, can't say enough about the job that they did during this past year, and the score's reflected. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Very blessed to have all great departments, the Fire Department, the Police Department, the School Department, DPW. I agree 100 percent. Thank you. Council Fallon for personal privilege?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple, just a couple of things. Actually, in that vein, a nice compliment to the Forestale School. We have members of the Salemwood School who also have classes who raised their test scores as well.
Yeah, it was the Fairway School. I'm a member of the Fairway School Council, so that's why I mentioned.
But also Salemwood, too, as well. Just want to acknowledge, and you reminded me, Council, to do that, so thank you. October, we, we talked about the fact, for, for those of you who were here last week, that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and as it is the leading form of violent crime committed in the Malden community today, and in light of the recent violence that has, we are all familiar with here, unfortunately, we'll be having a candlelight vigil thanks to the help of Pizza Pizza and Mr. Joe Crowley on October 20th at 6:00 p.m. that evening. So we welcome anyone to come down for that. October actually also has a special reservation for breast cancer awareness, and I wanted to make sure that I acknowledge the Malden YWCA for all the wonderful work that they do with their breast cancer program, and for anyone who is interested in learning more about that program and supporting it, I urge you to call the Malden YWCA. And on a last note, it's been encouraging to see how many people have been turning out to these council meetings, and I want to thank you, to, to those of you who've turned out tonight, it's important that you come out to witness what takes place here and, and participate in the process of, of the government business. So I just want to acknowledge everyone who's here tonight and thank you, and I hope you encourage more people to, to come up to these meetings and the committee meetings, which are also equally important. Those are public meetings, and, and therefore, you're all welcome to participate and sit in on the committee meetings. So I, for one, I appreciate the increased number of people who are turning out to our City Council meetings, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Fallon. Council Paul Condon for personal privilege?
Thank you, Mr. President. This time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the passing of Paul McCarthy, the brother of longtime schoolteacher Robert McCarthy and former Ward 2 councilor, so if we could stand for a moment of silence, I'd appreciate it.
If I could, from the chair, for personal privilege, Foggy Friends of Oak Grove are going to be having their annual Haunt Jaunt, a nice road race that they run every year. Please look for the flyers, they'll all be around the city, and please participate in that. And with that, I don't see any other lights, I'll entertain a motion from Tua. On Council Christensen's motion to adjourn, all those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Good evening.